Chair, you should now be live.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to Cambridge City Council's first virtual civic affairs committee meeting. My name is councillor MacPherson, I'm chair of this committee and the meeting is taking place at 5:30 on the 18th of May. I will roll call councillors alphabetically by surname to ensure they are present. Please advise if you know of any apologies from other councillors when I ask you to speak. In that case then, we'll start with councillor Chadwick.
Yes, present, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Dazzle?
Also here, Chair.
Davy?
Present, Chair.
Councillor Sargent?
Present, Chair.
And councillor Thornborough?
Present, Chair.
And we welcome councillor Bigg.
And your course as well, Chair.
Sorry, what was that?
And councillor Herbert as well, Chair.
Okay, I didn't know you were on, I'm sorry. I hadn't got any notification on the screen of that. Officers permanently present throughout the meeting are Chief Executive Antoinette Jackson, Democratic Services Manager Gary Clift and Committee Manager James Goddard. If anyone has any problems hearing me throughout the meeting, please alert me by waving your hand or typing the meeting function and we'll rectify that. Just a bit of housekeeping, spare copies of agenda can be found on the city council's website under committee meetings, minutes and agendas. Can I ask all participants to keep themselves muted unless they've been invited to speak by the Chair and to keep your backgrounds blurred, please? If members would like to ask a question, though we need to type speak in the chat function, the Chair or the committee manager will introduce you when you are able to speak. Otherwise, I'll ask each member if they wish to ask a question after each representation. Please try and wait to speak until you have a red line round your picture. Please try and refer to specific page numbers within the agenda if you are referring to a specific paragraph or plan. Please note that people who have followed the and published meeting link will only be able to watch the meeting and will not be able to participate. Also, please note that there is about a 20 second delay between the actual meeting and the meeting which the public can view livestreamed. This meeting is automatically recorded. Everybody happy with that so far? Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item two, could councillors declare if they have any declaration of interest and also identify which item on the agenda their declaration relates to? Okay, thank you for that. So no declarations of interest. I can call each councillor if needed? Okay, thank you so much. Agenda items three of the 29th of January 2020 meeting have been submitted to this meeting for approval. If there are any concerns, please good members raise them now or otherwise they shall be approved as a correct record. Are there any comments on the last meeting? Thank you very much. In that case, we will approve those meeting, those records as correct. Now move on to item four, public questions. I believe if my information is correct, there are no members of the public requiring to ask questions. Can I just check that with the committee manager?
Is my understanding, yes, Chair, no public questions.
Okay, thank you very much. In that case then, that takes us to agenda item five, virtual committees and the convention thereof. Please could the democratic services manager introduce this item for me, Gary?
Thank you, Chair. My name's Gary Clift, I am the democratic services manager at Cambridge City Council. So the report that members have before them tonight is basically to respond to the government's regulations which were published in early April as a result of the coronavirus act, which basically permits decision-making meetings of the local authorities to take place in a virtual environment. Cambridge City Council so far has had one, sorry, two licensing subcommittees which were held last Thursday in a virtual environment. This is the second of the Cambridge City Council meetings to be held virtually. We have a planning committee scheduled for Thursday, the 21st of May, and then obviously the annual meeting a week on Thursday. Basically, what we're asking members to be happy with is you need some sort of conventions to follow so that the officers can organise your meetings as you would normally expect in normal format in a committee room, in this virtual way. And there are some principles that members, when this all started in early April, asked for, and that's important, that we enable the public to be ideally seen as well as heard in making contributions to these virtual meetings. The regulations require that all parties should be able to hear the contributions both of councillors and of any public participation, but there's no lawful requirement to be seen as well. So the officers have been working hard in the environment of Microsoft Teams is the environment that Cambridge City Council is using for its virtual meetings, and that's in partnership with South Cambridge District Council and Huntingdonshire District Council, who all are provided with a shared ICT service and it was, Microsoft Teams was the platform in which they decided we should operate with. And that's been developing even now, and what I would like to say at the start is the reason that the recommendation says that we will trial this for a month and then come back with any refinements is that we're all working with something that we haven't done before. Obviously, virtual meetings, there will be lots of discussion over the benefits and disbenefits of virtual meetings in the longer term, certainly in a democratic environment. Microsoft Teams is great if you're running a private company and want to have internal meetings virtually. It isn't so helpful in a sort of democratic engagement environment necessarily in the long term, and members will have views on that as we go along. But what we're asking for at the moment is obviously we need to start having business meetings, you need to start making decisions on things like planning applications, so that we need, we need a platform to work with. So these conventions have been written based on some national good practice, looking at what our colleagues in South Cambridgeshire and Huntingdonshire have been experiencing because they're using the same platform as us, and obviously taking into account what members here have been asking us to make sure that we ensure can happen. The other thing I would just say is that obviously it's important to take into account what members want and what we want to try and involve the public with. We also have to balance the need to make sure that whatever you decide is done in a proper way and there's no risk to any challenge on any decisions that we take that may not have been run properly, shall we say, in the virtual environment. So we are slightly risk averse, I must say, at the start, but we just want to set something up that we think is robust enough to ensure the business gets done. We will learn on a meeting by meeting basis, make refinements as we go along. So I think I'll leave it at that point, Chair, if I may, and just take questions from members?
Yeah, thank you very much for that. Members will note on page seven, the recommendations there, so point two, 2.1. Any questions for the officer? Okay, we don't appear to have any. Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, so I wasn't sure if I should just call out or if I should put my thing down in the chat. Yeah, just a quick question about public participation. So this is page 12 of the report, page 12 of the agenda pack, point 1.5 of the report. It's basically a procedural question. I'm wondering if, I know that the Teams software, to take part in these live events as a presenter, you have to, Teams only works on certain platforms. Sorry. Teams, the live events portion of functionality of Teams only works on certain platforms, but there are other platforms that you can use Teams on but not actually allow you to then present at a live event. So I had a slight concern that a member of public may find that they can happily watch the committee, but then when it is their turn to speak and they're invited to do so, they find that they're running Teams on a platform that doesn't actually support the necessary functionality. I know that the report talks about using a phone as a backup, and I was just wondering what the procedure is for a member of public who wishes to talk, and if this phone backup has actually been tested and how robust it is, because some people may find they have need of it.
Okay, thank you for that. Also, a question from councillor Dazzle, if I could just take that one as well, we'll list the questions and then the officer can respond to them all if that suits everybody.
Not really a question, but thank you, Chair. I actually just wanted to note that feedback I've had from meetings last week was very, very good, and it was a real tribute to the work the democratic services team have done, which I think has been superb, but it would be good to get an answer on those questions. But I just wanted to, yes, express my thanks to the officers.
Yeah, thank you for that. Are there any other questions before we go to response? Okay, in that case, the officer will respond, Gary?
Thanks for that and thanks for your thanks, and I forgot actually, and two of them watching at the moment, I need to place on record my thanks to the committee team over the last four weeks who've had their world turned upside down with the way of working. So my thanks and thank you for passing on your thanks. So on the, councillor Chadwick talked about what happens if you can't be seen. So what we were looking at, for example, the London Borough Richmond give quite a good comprehensive advice on their agenda pages to members of the public in how they can access our meetings. So we need to improve the amount of information we've given because at the moment, because we're learning, the information we've actually given on our agenda, for example, on the planning committee for Thursday is a bit scanned, but we need to improve the information for the public that we're giving. What basically we would be doing, and one of the reasons why we're asking for people to give us notice by two working days before meeting, is so that we can iron out those technical issues when we're wanting to involve the public and trying to come up with a solution for them if, like you say, the live link doesn't work. We have been working on a workaround on Teams at the moment, so some of our meetings might not necessarily be run as a live meeting, but as a normal Teams meeting, and this is one of them. But I think what we need to do and why we put it down in our conventions about the option of you're either seen live visually or it's a phone, an audio link, or failing that, a written submission, is to allow public participation. I would say though, that the way we've written it is we have given the Chair the ability to make judgements when it comes to the actual meeting itself, because sometimes I think a Chair needs to know how the meeting's going and whether or not they want to carry on with something if they feel as though someone hasn't had the opportunity to have their say.
Okay, is everybody happy with that response? And before we move on to recommendations, I'll just double check, as we've not done this before, that everyone has in fact asked a question that they might needed to have done. Okay, thank you, everyone. So if we, in that case then, we go to recommendations on page seven at 2.1. Is everybody in agreement with those recommendations? Just for the sake...
Do a roll call.
That is, that is just what I was going to say. For the sake of the procedure, I will go through the roll call. Roll call. Got some bounce back there somewhere, so must be a microphone on. So councillors, Chadwick? Are you happy?
Yes, I vote for the recommendation, thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Dazzle?
Likewise, I vote to support the recommendations, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davy?
Yes, vote in favour of the recommendations.
Councillor Sargent? So you are still muted, could you do that again?
I've got a delay in un-ticking the microphone, I'm in favour, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, I had exactly the same thing, thank you. Councillor Thornborough?
I'm councillor Thornborough and I'm in favour of the recommendations.
And as Chair, I'm also in favour of those recommendations, so thank you, everyone. And in fact then, takes us on to item six. Am I right? Yes, item six. Nominations for committee for municipal year 2021. Please could the democratic services manager introduce this item also? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, it's Gary Clift here, again, democratic services manager. So this is a, an annual report that we do before we go to the annual meeting of the council next Thursday. The council agenda will get published tomorrow, and you've had an update report circulated during today with some names attached to the relevant scrutiny committees and regulatory committees of the council and some suggestions for chairs and vice-chairs. There are no constitutional updates to report. You will need, the council on the 28th of May will need to accept that it's departing from proportionality for allocating a seat on the planning committee to councillor John Hipkin as a member of that planning committee. The, I think the combined authority have said that they have an annual meeting in early June and their officers have already said that they may have to look at proportionality for the combined authority, so I don't know if that will impact on the number of seats that Labour and Limbido councilors get across the county, but the number of conservative seats has gone down across Cambridgeshire, and so the officers said that they were having to look at proportionality at the moment, some of you may be aware of that, but that will obviously be after our annual meeting and we'll have to, we'll have to respond to that if we're told that the situation has changed on the combined authority allocation. I would just say one last thing is, you will all know that when it comes to the annual meeting, we normally have special meetings of relevant committees to appoint, working parties or executive councillors have to agree appointments to outside bodies. We will be publishing those agendas tomorrow, they will be taken at the end of the annual meeting, and I need to talk to the mayor and group leaders about how to hold those meetings in the most time efficient and unchaotic way possible.
That's all, Chair.
Thank you for that. In that case then, we'll just take any questions, but I will just point out the recommendations are on page 15, at 2.1. Councillors, do you have any questions? Sarah, you wish to speak?
Yes, Chair, sorry, please can I just make a correction to one of the nominations for vice-chair? I understand that the civic affairs vice-chair should be councillor Davy and not councillor Thornborough, which was included in the update report, so apologies for that if that could be amended.
Okay, that's all received, thank you. Are there any, just one final call for any questions? Okay, there are no questions, so in that case then, can we just go to the vote for recommendations at 2.1 on page 15? And as before, I'll go down the list. Councillor Chadwick?
Yes, vote for the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you for that. Councillor Dazzle?
Yeah, vote for the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you for that. Councillor Davy? Councillor Davy, are you voting on this one?
Councillor Davy is on mute. If he wants to put it in the chat function, I can read it on his, or is he abstaining?
We can't hear you unfortunately, Mike, so if you just pop it in the chat function, that'll be fine. So until then, councillor Sargent?
In favour, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Thornborough?
In favour, Chair.
And as Chair, I'm also in favour, so we're just watching that one last vote. If you have a problem there councillor Davy, just thumbs up or down and that will be fine till we can see it. So you're not voting for it then? Can I have a thumbs up or down whether you're voting for or against this recommendation?
Chair, I think Antoinette would like to speak, perhaps we could bring Antoinette in, please?
I've just seen that, I was just going to do that.
Thank you, Chair, I wonder if councillor Davy is abstaining because he's the subject of the matter for which the vote is taking place, he's saying no. So I've tried to unmute him, but that didn't work. I don't know if the Chair could try unmuting him to see if that works?
Worth a try. No, that's not going to work. I think he's just phoning committee manager now. Sorry for the delay, but we'll get that vote.
I think he's talking to Katie.
Yeah, we've seen that.
He, councillor Davy has reported that he's completely frozen. I've informed him that we can see him so that he could do a thumbs up or thumbs down for his vote, and he's done a thumbs up because he's in phase.
That's perfect, thank you very much. That will suffice for these purposes today, just a technical hitch in that case then.
Chair, could I draw your attention to the meeting chat, something, the dates for 4th of June and 8th of July need to be agreed?
Yeah, that's the next item, so I'm just getting to that now because that is the final item on the agenda. So if we've dealt with, we're all happy with item six, we'll move on to item seven, which is the date of the next two meetings. Does anybody have any questions on those two dates? Okay, thank you for that.
Chair, sorry to interrupt, I can see Gary's got his hand up and I think Antoinette might also have his hand up. Perhaps we could ask if they'd like to speak?
I'm just going to go to Gary right now, but yeah.
Sorry, Chair, I just, I just wanted to remind or give you the context of this. So the 4th of June is for when we're hoping to have the 1819 statement of accounts and associated reports. Members of the committee will remember that this has been scheduled for some time, but we're very hopeful that that will happen on the 4th of June. The 8th of July, that's before the scheduled council meeting, which is the normal course of how you would organise your committee cycle, but in the last two or three years, you'll recall with the statement of accounts having to be signed off by the end of July, civic affairs committee has had to meet as late as possible in the month of July to give the auditors and our accountants enough time to do that work. The external auditor wrote to the chief finance officer back in January to say that the statement of accounts for 1920 won't be ready until November this year. This is before Covid-19 hit us. So that had been something already agreed by external auditors nationwide, that the audit was going to take longer for 1920, or being given time to go into the autumn and the government are happy with that as well. So that's why we're moving the civic affairs meeting in July to take place before council, and actually that's quite helpful because there might be some constitutional business that we need to report to council in mid-July.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you for that. Chief exec, you wish to speak?
No, sorry, Chair, I was waving accidentally.
Yes, you had your speaking hand up. Councillor Thornborough?
Chair, on the 4th of June, there is a proposed planning committee meeting during the morning, but I assume the civic affairs meeting would be in the evening so that there wouldn't be a clash.
They're normally at 5:30, I'm guessing it's going to be the same time?
Chair, if I may?
Certainly.
So councillor Thornborough makes a good point. When she is at the planning committee, if she is on Thursday, she will find out that we're planning not to have, oh no, sorry, we are having the planning committee on the 4th of June, aren't we? Sorry, forgive me, it's the following week that we're going to, we're going to move. So apologies, my brain is rather garbled, apologies.
So can I just check that we are still, before we go to the vote here, that we are actually still talking about the next meeting is the 4th of June at 5:30 and to agree the meeting after that takes place on the 8th of July, not the 22nd, which is want to check that we're still on target with those two dates before we vote?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Any further questions for the officer?
There are a couple in the speak, chat function, Chair.
So there are, councillor Sargent, councillor Thornborough, I'll get used to looking at that in the end. Councillor Sargent?
My understanding, Chair, in terms of planning committees are that they're not going to run all day as they traditionally do, and we might have them more frequently, so the sort of clash with the planning meeting in June, I don't believe will actually be an issue apart from the fact that people might have to go to two meetings.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Thornborough?
I have a message from councillor Davy who's had to leave the meeting for IT problems and sends the apology.
Yeah, that's all received, we thought that's what happened, thank you for that. So in that case then, if we can go to the recommendations for those two dates and we'll do the roll call, councillor Chadwick?
Yes, vote for the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Dazzle?
I'm in support, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Davy? Of course, he's not here, you just told me that. Councillor Sargent?
For, Chair.
Councillor Thornborough?
Councillor Thornborough and I vote for the recommendations, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, I'll just mention councillor Thornborough, your sound is not great, so perhaps just a little bit closer, maybe it's breaking up a lot. And as Chair, I ought to vote for that, so that is a unanimous vote, and that brings us to the last item on this agenda, but what I will say is that as Chair of civic affairs, this will be my last meeting, different though it is, and just to say that I thank all the officers that have helped me through the last three years, or is it four? And hopefully they still... And hopefully they still fill in one piece, having had to deal with all those little bits and pieces over that time. And the only reason I'm standing down is just that I'm sure everybody knows, is that because it's a constitutional issue and I don't have a choice to but stand down from the Chair of Civic Affairs, but I have very much enjoyed it and hopefully one day we'll be able to do it again. So thank you all and also thank everyone for.
Can I just, on behalf of us all, your work over these four years on civic affairs and your leadership on it? And it's obviously a vital part of the operation of the council and we appreciate what you've done for us in that respect.
That's country, Councillor Sargent. Hopefully, as they say in those famous films, I'll be back. I'd just like to thank everyone today actually for taking part in the first, I believe is the first full committee meeting of the council in this virtual stadium. And I think it went very well, we've got some stuff to learn, but I think that it's gone very, very well indeed. And thank all the officers for putting this together because I know how hard they worked. And Sarah has had to phone me about probably four or five times for us to get this together. So we thank Sarah especially for taking our own time to do that. So thank you everyone and good night, have a safe trip home.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair, I'm sorry.
Welcome back Mike.